Good evening, Okina, July 16th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Let's get started with a roll call. Kelly Lynn, on you.
Mr. Andreessen.
Hello.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Here.
Mrs. Oost. Mrs. Tony.
Here.
Mrs. Linsky.
Here.
Okay, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public communication? I didn't see anything in the basket. Okay, moving on. Action requests. Would anyone like to go first? Go right ahead.
2025 regular meeting and closed session meeting and the June 23, 2025 special meeting as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, concerns before we vote? Hearing none. Kelly Lynn, can you help us please?
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Linsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes. Mrs. Tony, you're on deck.
Okay. All right. For bills, I had just a couple of them for Dr. Shaw, who has always immediately answered them perfectly. So I move to approve the monthly bills as presented.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none?
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Linsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Personal report. Who would like that?
I'll do it. Okay. I move to approve personal recommendations for C 1 through 3 as presented, subject to successful background check and verification of credentials if applicable.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none.
Mrs. McMillan? Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Linsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Consent agenda.
I move to approve the disposal of materials and equipment as presented.
Second. Eric. Questions or concerns? Moving on.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Linsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Hot water heater project.
I move to approve the replacement of two hot water heaters at MJHS in the amount not to exceed $34,500 as presented.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none?
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Linsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Window blinds project.
I move to approve issuing an RFP for the district-wide window blinds project for summer 2026, as well as the total project cost budget of $173,700 and payment to full for $12,805.
Second.
Julie. Questions or concerns? Moving on.
Mrs. Linsky?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Okay. Termination of contract with Evans &amp; Son.
I move to approve the termination of the contract with Evans &amp; Son as presented.
Second.
Questions or concerns? Okay.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Linsky?
Yes.
That being said, let's move on to presentations for our strategic plan review.
Good evening. This is our yearly review of the accomplishments that have taken place over the course of the past school year as it relates to our strategic plan. As a reminder, we are in our fourth school year of the strategic plan, and so we will share with you all of the accomplishments that have taken place the past few years. The first slide is just a reminder that our strategic plan, our goals fall into five different categories. Curriculum instruction, finance, human resources, and communication. This year's presentation follows a slightly different format than in years past. So we're just going to talk about the accomplishments from this past school year. In years past, we've revisited the accomplishments from the previous school years as well. But in looking at that together, we were like, ooh, we're going to be here all night. So we're just really going to focus on the accomplishments from the past school year and then our next steps, thinking about our strategic plan goals moving into next school year as well. And then as a reminder, we do have all of the previous strategic plan reviews posted on our district website under the strategic plan page. So if anyone does want to reference back to the accomplishments from the previous year, our past presentations are linked there for your viewing pleasure. We do have a slightly different format, like I mentioned, as well. You're going to see next to each goal, we've keyed them based on where we are in working towards accomplishing those goals. You'll see a green check if that goal has been completed. If it's an ongoing goal that's really never going to be completed, but something that's like an ongoing, we're working towards it, you'll see that orange symbol. If the goal is still in progress, you'll see the yellow symbol. And if the goal has not yet started, you will see the red symbol. So I will start for us this evening in reviewing our six goals in the area of curriculum. Our first goal is accomplished. So we are, you know, celebrating the work that we've done over the past several years as it relates to ELA curriculum in the district. This past school year, we implemented the Studies in Curriculum in grades 6 through 8. So as we move forward, we're just going to continue to implement all of those action steps that we have over the past few years as it relates to our K-8 ELA curriculum. Goal 1B is looking at extending learning in our exploratory area curriculum. This year, we implemented the App Creators Unit as part of our Project Leadway. That was our fourth and final course that we've implemented at the junior high. We worked on creating our case framework that the board approved last month, I believe. So we will have that ready to go next year for implementation. And although our orchestra program has been in place for a few years, I did just want to highlight that since our orchestra program has been in place, we've grown the program from 22 musicians from when it first came to be to 86 this past school year. So we definitely have a lot of students taking advantage of that newly implemented program here in the district. So as we look forward into next school year, we'll be implementing the case framework that the board approved, as well as on continuing those project leadway courses in our orchestra program. Goal 1C is focused on engaging students in rigorous programs of study and having those opportunities for more rigorous coursework and enriched coursework. We did a lot of work in the school this past school year. We were able to take Northwestern's report that they provided to us and work with our task force to identify, plan for, and strengthen the opportunity that we will have in place for our advanced learners in the district. The board did approve our recommendations to begin in the fall of 2025. We had a lot of professional development happening over the spring and the summer as well that's focused on differentiation and instructional practices for advanced learners. And we have teachers who are taking the graduate level courses, as well as obtaining their gifted endorsements starting this summer as well, and that will continue into next school year. So our next steps in this goal is to implement all of the work that has happened over the past 18 months as it relates to those updated advanced learner programs. So we are excited to see how that plays out for our students next school year. 1D, this particular goal is completed in 2172 with no further action steps. 1E is really looking at our assessment system as it relates to benchmark formative and summative assessments. This school year, we were able to implement the Common Formative and Summative Assessments found within our new 6th through 8th grade ELA program. We implemented district-wide MTSS processes and systems for the review of Tier 1 data, so consistent processes that we had worked on our MTSS handbook for. We were able to implement those this year, as well as the Tier 2 and Tier 3 data based on that Year 1 Plan that each school put together. Next school year, our schools will be implementing their Year 2 of 3 Plan as it relates to their MTSS work. We will take a look at our benchmark assessment options. So what we currently use for FastBridge, we've received feedback from multiple groups that it might be time to be looking to see if FastBridge is still meeting our needs and that it may be still, but it has been in place for several years. So we'll look to see if that will continue for us or if there's something better out there. And we will also be researching and reviewing data management systems for more effective data analysis for MTSS processes. So right now, our MTSS teams are pulling data from many, many different sources, putting them into spreadsheets, and it does take a lot of time. So we're going to look to see if there's something that can help support us a little bit more efficiently in compiling that data for our MTSS teams to take a look at. And 1F is developing that technology scope and sequence. This goal has not yet started, but next school year, we will be gathering interest in committee membership to begin this goal in the 26, 27 group. I will also take the area on instruction. We have three goals in this area. The first being students being provided differentiated instruction, as well as intervention strategies for students who have not yet met standards. This year, like I mentioned earlier, we did have all of our schools implemented Year 1 of their three-year MTSS plan. We piloted a variety of intervention materials for Tier 3 instruction in all of our schools. We strengthened responsive differentiated instruction in reading and math at MES and MIS. Our special education department conducted a review that resulted in recommendations to further the department's work. Our special education steering committee was formed to utilize those recommendations and is planning for next steps improvement. And all of our staff members were provided Tier 1 plus differentiation and meeting the needs of advanced learners. Looking forward into next school year, all of our schools will be implementing Year 2 of their MTSS plans. We'll be continuing to strengthen our responsive differentiated instruction in reading and math at our MES and MIS. We will be implementing the special education steering committee Year 1 goals and action plans. And we will be implementing our advanced learner program Tier 1 Plus, which is the differentiation in the classroom. Goal 2B is focused on professional development. We believe we have met this goal. This year, we continued our year-long professional development plans that are in alignment with our district goals and school improvement plan, which include the use of early release days and our teacher institute days to accomplish that. We've continued to use strategic use of our instructional coaches in both student and our coaching cycles and curriculum implementation with our teacher team. And we've provided specific professional development for our special education team on topics such as instructional materials, modifications, behavioral escalation strategy techniques. So as we think forward in the future, we will just continue to implement the action steps that we have over the past several years. Goal 2C is a goal that is still in progress, where we're looking at analyzing student data at multiple levels throughout the district. This past school year, we were able to implement our Common Formative and Summative Assessments in grades 6 through 8, as well as the implementation of our district-wide MTSS processes for the review of data at all of those different levels. As we move into next year, as I've mentioned several times, our school will be implementing their Year 2 of their MTSS plans, which includes analyzing of data. And we will be, again, researching and reviewing possible data management systems that will allow for more effective and efficient analysis of data. Goal 3, I will hand over to Dr. Shaw.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. You can see on the front of goal area 3, just the 3, A, B, C, and D all have the ongoing check mark next to them. All of these goals are ongoing types of goals. When we take a look at Goal 3A, the district shall continue to update and modernize school buildings and infrastructure, and of course, with our facilities master plan. So this is an ongoing process. I've updated the plan that we have for FY '26. And then inside the plan, there's linked presentations. When we take a look at the O and M referendum presentation that we do every year, so it has a very detailed and robust presentation on how that money is spent every year. We added a new one two years ago, so this is the second iteration of the summer debrief presentation, which gives an update of what the summer looked like, how far we got with the project. And then the master facility plan update is also presented to the board in March. And so this is this March of '25 presentation, in which there's a live link. And so our next steps are to continue to update the plans and reports. 3B, modernize, to monitor and improve the appearance and cleanliness of the school buildings. Accomplishments for this year, hired a new custodial company, who we feel is going to elevate our cleanliness in our buildings. And we did seal coating and restriping of the MES, MIS parking lots. There's a picture of the teen rooms at MJ and at MIS, where we have been very conscientious in using the same pattern that you see in the boardroom, where the carpet and the color accent wall is green, where here we have our palette with gray. And then our next step is to continue with flooring and painting projects. You guys saw a little bit of one tonight in the areas that we moved forward with the, with the, painting the tile and the carpet. And so we do have consistency throughout the district. 3C, continue to improve the, oh, technology infrastructure. Let me hand it off to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Goal 3C, the district shall continue to improve technology infrastructure as it relates to supporting student learning. What we completed in 2025 was the installation and configuration of a new Recus Network equipment. I know that was something we brought to the board in 2022. You know, unfortunately, due to supply chain, it took over a year to get the equipment. We were able to get that, and that is a long-term investment for safety and security and to be able to support the technology going forward. We also completed the installation of the new Scale Version Machine servers. As you know, a lot of the nodes that run on those machines do have important things related to curriculum instruction as they sync certain things like ClassLink and Skyward, and they run a lot of important features. Down the road, we do hopefully this school year, we hope to replace the Generation 1 fiber that we identified in the buildings last summer. Hopefully, I don't want to spoil anything, but hopefully have an information item on that next month. But that is another long-term investment that hopefully that will support the district's needs for many years to come once we get that done, so.
All right. Back to me. Goal 3D, we shall engage in sound, responsible financial stewardess through the alignment of resources with district strategic goals. So we use the format of the strategic plan to determine who gets what and how much. So we try to make alignment with all of our resources and decisions that are very much so in align with the goals that you're seeing tonight. We've got the linked presentation with five-year financial projections. So every year in March, you see a five-year financial projection. This is the presentation from this past March. And so our next steps are to monitor spending. And the district also has received a financial recognition score, the highest score from ISD. So we want to continue to receive that highest level score from the state board. Goal area 4, HR. So HR falls into some of mine and some of Dr. Johnson's, so this area we will share.
Goal 4A, ensuring that all of our staff are provided the training and resources needed to successfully do their positions. This past school year, we were able to accomplish all of the professional development that I talked about for our certified staff in the goal area 2. In addition, Mrs. Mont did a great job of ensuring that our paraprofessionals receive training on proactive behavior intervention strategies to be able to support students across a variety of academic settings. And we continue to offer those choice sessions to all staff this year. So all staff had the option of choosing the sessions that they felt best met their personal goals at our teacher institute day. As we look forward into next school year, we will be working with our classified staff and ensuring they receive training on the methods and purposes of data collection as it relates to a student's IP, as well as proactive behavioral intervention strategies, again, to support students in their behaviors across a variety of academic settings. And we will continue to provide that targeted professional development aligned to our school improvement goals and district strategic goals for all of our staff next school year.
4B, it's another ongoing goal, where we allocate resources, people, time, and money equitably and appropriately based on student, school, and community needs. So in 2425, some of those accomplishments include professional development funds going toward accomplishing the school improvement plans and strategic goals. We invested in a new ELA curriculum for grades 6 through 8, the implementation of the STAR classroom. And 2526, next steps, we're looking for funding curriculum for social studies and SEL programs. And we have an addition of 1.0 FTE for a special education teacher at MJHS next year. 4C, onboard, onboarding process fully informs and prepares our newly hired staff for the expectations of their assigned positions. So our HR director, Kim Subanchik, has been just outstanding at organizing her onboarding orientations for all new staff. She goes through policies, procedures, benefits. She has the onboarding days for people to come in in person. She sits with a group and goes through everything. She just does a great job with them, making them really feel welcome and informed. And then our next step is to continue to implement that onboarding process that has been successful, continue that work. 4D, regularly review compensation trends in the region to attract and retain talented, diverse, dedicated employees. Accomplishments, continue to provide open enrollment meetings. So Kim started that last year, hosting open enrollment meetings at each building to talk about what's going on in open enrollment, all the benefits that are available to our staff members. This past year, we added a new medical plan as a cost-effective option for our staff. And then our next steps are to continue to monitor employment and compensation trends, look at options for benefits as we move forward. 4E.
I'll take that one. All right. So 4E is an ongoing goal to ensure that our, all of our employees feel included, respected, and supported. So a few highlights of those accomplishments. We continue to have numerous staff committees throughout the district in which our teacher and staff input is vital to making decisions regarding our students and what's happening within our classrooms. We've worked as an administrative team to have a strategic increase in the nominations for the state-level Those Who Excel Award, so that we can recognize staff members not only locally, but at the state level as well. And our special education program review included staff interviews and feedback, which was vital to the action steps that the steering committee was able to formulate. As we think about next school year, we will be, and we have been emailing exit interviews to all of our retired and resigned employees. And we will be implementing some additional wellness initiatives for our staff members, and you can see some of those examples. And our last goal is in the area of communication. So we had five specific goals that we were working towards, and four out of those five have been completed. The first goal was specific to our website and making sure that it was more accessible, more visually appealing, and provided a lot more information from a transparency perspective. We have continued to update the website with timely information as we have since our website, our new website was brought out a couple of years ago, and we will continue to do that as we move forward. The next goal is specific to the use of social media, as well as the district app to ensure that our community is receiving timely information and has other sources of information or other ways of getting that information. So this specific school year, we really tried to increase the amount of social media posts that we were providing on a variety of different topics, and that we were consistently doing those to highlight happenings throughout the district. We relaunched the district app to our community, although it had been there. We felt some of the feedback we had received is that there were some families who were unaware of that. And we did increase the development of news stories and live feed news that was published on our website and app this school year. Next year, we will continue to do what we were doing, utilizing social media and that app of sharing information with our community. Making sure, this goal 5C is making sure that we have information about the variety of programs that are available in our district in an easily accessible way on our website and on our app. The accomplishments this school year, we did update my department-specific page, the curriculum and instruction page, to include grade level content area curriculum maps. So those are available in every content area except 6th through 8th grade ELA, because we had just implemented this year. So we'll be building those this upcoming year, as well as ensuring that we had clear information, as well as family-friendly information regarding our programming, such as our advanced learner programming, our multilingual programming, as well as our MTSS programming. And next school year, we'll be continuing to update our websites with any other updated information that our families may need on new programs in the district. This particular goal is creating avenues for better and more frequent communication between our families and our teachers. This school year, we had the implementation of the Studio Virtual Assignment Notebook at the junior high. Next school year, we will be reflecting on the use of that. And then we will also like to research the opportunities that exist within our new Skyward system to see if there's a way that we can, again, enhance that communication between classroom and home in a more consistent way, a consistent method for doing that. And last but not least, this goal was specific to communication as it relates between staff or district office and staff and families. So we had a lot of accomplishments this year, again, that increased use of social media to communicate events happening, news, and celebrations. We launched our new district newsletter this year, and we had three editions of that go out. Mrs. Mont began a weekly student services newsletter with her staff that included timely department information on a weekly basis. She also implemented quarterly student services family newsletters that went home to all of our families within the student services department regarding district happenings, as well as local events that families may be interested in. We published staff committee recaps for all the committees that we did this year. So not only the people in the room who were part of that committee, but highlights of what happened during those committee meetings. So all staff felt like they were informed of what was happening and the decisions that were being made throughout the progress of those committees. We published for the first time a Okina School Report Card Highlights publication that went out to all of our families late fall, early winter, that provided a summary of how our school and our districts, our district were performing. When we also held an advanced learner parent informational meetings live, we had two of those meetings, and then the meeting was recorded for our families to access if they were not able to make that. Next school year, we will continue with those communications that we've implemented. And that is all of our goals and all of our accomplishments. I do want to say thank you again for providing the strategic direction that the board has for our strategic plan. Being here for all the years that we've had it in place, it truly has provided us with a pathway of how to improve our district. And all the decisions that we make, we really keep in mind, you know, what are those, where are we with our goals? How does it fit within our goals? And it has really provided us a great pathway to do some great things for our teachers and for our students. So thank you again for putting that in place and the vision that you've had to allow us to work through. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, it wasn't just us. We had a lot of people from the community too. We had a lot of admins. It was a packed room of people.
It was a very big group of people, yeah.
And that was good to see. But I'm glad to see it's going along well so far. And that was good to see, but I'm glad to see it's going along well so far. And thank you for the update.
I have a quick question. First, a comment, just, this is really helpful, the accomplishments. I'm sure you could have had more in there as well, because, you know, it's just been a great year. And I just want my comment beyond that is the communication piece, the effort that you led along with a lot of other folks to really boost the social media presence and get information out, I just appreciate that. My question, Jim, is what is, can you remind me what, I know we have a year left on our strategic plan, so how do we go about, when do you start thinking about how we gather folks to, in the community, the teachers, the, you know, what are, how soon do you do that?
In my mind, it's about a year from now.
Okay.
A year from now, we are able to summarize the progress we've made. We can try to figure out a few things on our end, then we can start putting it out to the community, see who wants to be part of the process. And then ultimately, probably beginning in mid-January of, in my case, it would be 27, that, which sounds weird when you said that.
Yeah.
But that's really when we try to get people together, most likely over at the junior high and the gym. We had a lot of community feedback and support last time, which was very nice because it helps us figure out things, but also helps open us some eyes with a different perspective at times. But in about a year, I think we'll start planning the next steps for the next five-year plan. Is that a fair idea, guys?
I have a comment here. So in place right now, the board began that process, it looks like, in April, May of 2021, and it wasn't passed for a year after that. So it took a year for that process to happen. So I just want to be cognizant of that because if this plan is through the end of 2027, and it takes a year, then we need to count for that time, just based on what it took to get the plan we have now. That's my first comment. And then the second comment is, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that we weren't supposed to ask questions right now and that we were going to submit questions for the presentation and everything after this meeting. Is that, okay, so the questions don't need to be asked right now, we can follow up with it. Okay, thank you.
Megan, do you have anything you'd like to share about the financial?
Nothing more than last month, the next one is September 8th.
You're on deck.
Mr. Gurney and I submitted a memo that outlined our discussion. I think you can ask questions if anybody could.
Good report.
We did such a good job, they don't have any questions.
They're not hoping on anything to that, it makes it really.
I'm plan, I'm sorry, I'm planning to submit questions after the meeting. So I just, I just don't want people to think that I don't have any questions, because...
Bob, you had a written report, everybody was able to read it. Do you have any, like, a one-minute summary you wanted to share, or is everything in the report as it was?
I think everything is in the report as it was. I think it's pretty clear. I did want to start by saying thank you so much. It's been a wonderful start here in Mokina. I really want to thank, I know he's not here in the room, but Steve Stein did such a wonderful job of the transition. I got a chance to meet with him many, many times. And I, I talked to Dr. Johnson last week, and I said, we've got a really, really amazing team here. And not only four strong cabinet members, but a really strong administrative team. And I'm very excited to be starting this journey with Mokina. Additionally, I wanted to share the warmth and the responsiveness I get from the board is so appreciated from all seven members. It's been really fantastic. And again, I got appointed Dr. Johnson. The Fourth of July parade was, I think, the first we had done this in a long time, the longest that I think Mike Rolinutis could even remember, and it was fantastic. And she did such a nice job kind of spearheading that project, and staff came out left and right to help us, and it was really, really impressive. So thank you. I did want to have one more comment. I've researched a lot of school districts. I've yet to see a school district that comes back to the strategic plan so, as such a good job as Mokina does. We do a really nice job in this district of coming back and reflecting what we're doing well, and where are some accomplishments, what we can do better, and I appreciate that a lot. So thank you.
Good report, and thank you. Dr. Johnson, nice report. Do you have any, like, anything else to share?
No, I had our assessment calendar for this upcoming school year. Just want to say thank you to our staff who have continued to work throughout the summer on social studies mapping, professional development for our advanced learners, some advanced learner unit creation. So, you know, Mrs. Barr was in earlier this summer, helping support the social studies work. So, you know, thank you to the teachers who are coming in over the summer to make sure that we're ready to go for this school year.
There we go. Megan.
Good evening.
Nice report. Any additional information to share?
No, short and sweet this month, just an updating on staffing. The world of special education continues over the summer. We have a few evaluations we continue to do for our early intervention students. And then just a short shout out to our extended school year team over at Lincoln Way Area Special Education 843 Team at Grand Prairie and Pioneer Grove. They are wrapping up on Thursday, so keep it on, keep it on. Thank you. I think we blinked, and the summer's almost over.
The time goes way too fast.
And no one's commenting on the balloon arch, but that was handmade by Kristen, so...
And it has survived, not only the Fourth of July prep, the entire parade route, and it's still here.
I was hoping somebody was going to say it, so I, I'll say it. The balloon arch has survived, yes. Beautifully done, Kristen, beautifully done, and Julie. Magical.
I love it. Terry, we have a first draft of the tentative amended budget.
You do. I, inside, you have a manila folder at your table. It is a, in the memo in my board report, you know that it's a rough draft. There's a manila folder like this, Kelly.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, yep, yep. So there's...
This is for two months, two months.
Correct, this is for two months from now.
Yep.
So this is a rough draft. There is so much information that I don't have yet, like our funding from ISBE, any of our grants, the 843 budget, our transportation report. I don't have any of that data. So this is a budget based on the last three years. So there is a cover page that gives you the summary of what it looks like. And so it's an unaudited beginning fund balances because we're in the midst of our audit right now. It has revenue and expenses, and then the over/under. So you can see that the ed fund is really where we have a deficit budget, so we'll be really looking at the ed fund hard. The O&amp;M fund is about, almost balanced, you know, it's almost balanced. The O&amp;M referendum money, that takes us, it uses some of our fund balance, so it's still fine because we have that 235 fund balance that we need to spend down, so it leaves us with a 3%. So that is a planned deficit inside the O&amp;M referendum money with 80,000 buffer. And then the rest of the funds, IMRF Social Security, again, that is, that deficit is fine with fund balance. Next year, we'll levy for more in IMRF and Social Security. And you'll hear that from me in October, November, and December when we do the levy. Everything else is looking pretty good. So that is the first draft, that's the overview page. The next three-page document breaks it down, the same kind of thing. And then you have the all-funds report, which is like line by line, each individual line that you can take a look at, and it's the Skyward report with this, this current, original and revised, look like the same thing because we're in the same year. It has a little bit of activity year-to-date, and then the last three years for a reference. So that information is included. And as far as in my information report, I don't have anything further to add into that. There's a summary of our summer projects and their status.
Man, knocking two out at once, I love it. Lincoln, you're up, how we doing over there?
Skyward, we knew we were going to be talking about this tonight, be really quick. Registration and enrollment are open. I know in my report, we were waiting on a piece the fall when I submitted it. We were able to get that completed Thursday afternoon, and then we had enrollment and registration ready Friday, but we held off until Monday because we wanted, we held off until letting families know until Monday because we wanted to be there for support. But there were some few families that figured it out, and they went ahead and they were able to register some, some students into the system over the weekend, which is fine, so everything's good there. We linked Skyward to Google now. If you haven't figured it out, if you're logged into Google in your Mokina account and you click on the little off-home menu on the top right, I do have a Skyward icon in the bottom of that list. All you have to do is click on it, and staff members should be automatically logged in to their Skyward cumulative account, which is, which is pretty nifty, in most cases. Just want to throw that out there, there is, there's some situations where it's not going to let you, but we're going to figure that out. And then the tech department's been working on the Chromebooks that came in, and I believe they're still putting on cases, they were as of today, so those should be ready to go. And that's all I had in my report.
Fair enough. Thank you, Lincoln.
Thank you.
Anna, you're up.
All right, we'll start with finance, financial reports. I actually would, did not attend the meeting for our district last month because of other things, but, so I don't have too much of the personal stuff to, you know, that you guys know about, but I will do this financial report. The District Two Tank sent the fuel bills through April, so there's an increased amount in fuel this month. Mr. Engler projects us to still be on track with the budget, except for transportation and bus monitors, as we had previously discussed. Mr. Engler has inquired if you would like to set up a meeting to discuss cooperative billing for your district. We could do so. If this is something you'd like to do, let Mr. Sarah Rexroad and Mr. Engler know. The door's open, if you need to know anything.
They're nice people, you know, they're cool, and just say hi.
Actually, I met him on Monday.
Oh, good, yeah. We had a nice meeting. Love it. We need to put a super dennis.
Sir's great. The tentative budget timeline is as follows, and I think we already had it with the advisory committee, and on governing board on 7/22 will have it, and then public hearing and final approval will be at the governing board meeting in August, August 26. Let's see, we did, we had a lot of approvals, but the one that we most significantly, significantly want everybody to know is the cyber limit. Sarah did a lot of research with the district surrounding, in three of the districts, when they hadn't approved the 5 million, and three of the board, with the 5 million.
I'm sorry, I missed, I, so we don't have anything to reference right now for your report, is that right?
It's, it's in there, is it in X right now? Because I know she said, Sabina sent them, but late. You didn't get them?
When is the meeting, is it?
Next Tuesday.
So they don't have their minutes from the last meeting because it was only three weeks ago, or is that...
It came in late. Now Sabina did, I don't know why Sabina didn't get them, but she did submit them.
And then the financial report is part of that?
Pardon me?
Do we see the financial report?
You should in the minute, in the minute, I'm not sure. I think, I think most of it's in there. And I, you know, I'll, I'll get it here. Yeah, I need to check that again.
So...
I haven't even looked at Sabina's report that she sent over, she just sent it yesterday, so...
It seems like, because it seems like this is, this happens every month, right? Like, that we're like, it's the very last minute that we get the minutes for our, for our meeting? I'm just wondering...
From our meeting or for?
Like, for what you're discussing right now, we don't get an opportunity to look at anything from 843 because it comes in so late, or in this case, it didn't come in. So, does it make more sense for us to discuss like a month after? Or I don't know?
Well, the thing is, so we're kind of a month, yeah, so next week will be our meeting for, let's see, what are we, for July?
Sure.
Well, but usually we're a month, my reports are a month, because our meetings are after our meetings, right? So then my report to you guys, as we go into a July meeting, and my report from June, you know?
Right, but it's hard to track when there's nothing to look at, and this is new information that you're...
Usually they're, Kelly puts them in, into, into our minutes, but Sabina lately, they're moving, Sarah and her team, Sarah and Sabina are moving to make space for more students. So they moved from Pioneer Grove, just within the last month, they've been moving over to Chelsea. Chelsea offered them space over there, and so they've been, you know, kind of tactic with, with moving out of Pioneer Grove. And so Sabina has been a little behind with submitting the minutes, but I can let her know that...
Yeah, or, or just maybe send us a link to where we could reference like the financials or things on that organization, because I, I don't, I don't think we typically get that, but I could be wrong, because it just seems like, you know...
Not the detailed reports, do you get of the financials, no.
Right.
For the governing board mostly, if you wanted to see it, I'm sure I can...
Just tell me where to find it or whatever, and then, and then, I guess I can look at the minutes after you put them in the board book when you get them, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know why, I will, right now. I sure will. Anyway, so that's really the important one was that, of the cyber limit. So, so governing board approved for the 5 million.
Okay, fair enough.
And that is my...
More, more information to be coming, we're working with another group, we're on their timeframe as well. Understood.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That being said, there were three FOIA requests, they have been asked and answered, so we are going to move on to items for the August 13th agenda. Please remember, we moved the meeting to the 13th because of the first day of school, so we're a little, little off-track for next month, because we don't want to do it all in one day. It's a long day for everybody. So we'll have more conversations about the budget, we'll have project updates, we'll have, you know, the normal August stuff.
I didn't really have information items for action next month, so I'm like, oh, right, I usually have like a list of them, usually good for at least one or two, but the budget will still be information next month. It'll, it'll be, yeah, it'll be an action tentative.
We don't, it'll be tentative, we don't vote on to September.
We'll vote on the tentative one.
We'll the tentative for next month.
Yeah, so that'll be an action item, the tentative amended budget for action, and then it'll be tentative, or then it'll be the budget following month. So yes, that will be an action item. Thank you.
Oh, good.
So we submit questions for this, what we just got, that, like, same, like this week?
Yeah, yep. I'll send an email on Friday with my weekly update, and then there'll be a separate document, bad questions, that's it.
Okay, okay. And then next month, we're going to see an action for recording the board meetings, is that right?
I think that we're ready to make a decision and put it in action, yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I was going to say, I do hopefully have an information item about the replacing of the Generation One fiber, so...
Okay, that works. Okay. Don't really have any next steps and follow-up related to the discussion or action items because it already got handled. So, for the good of Mokina, we had well over 1,000 people from Mokina, including a lot of families come out to Yom Kippur Farm on Saturday, but also Friday night with bingo for the Lions Club. They're in the process of going through their numbers. They're in the process of going through their numbers, but they do it as their main annual fundraiser to help raise money that can give way to families in our town with vision and hearing problems, also supporting families with food during the summer, and it's a really nice program. And I'd like to thank our community for doing that. I'd like to thank some of the people sitting around this table who participate in the Fourth of July parade, not only building it, but doing it. But my favorite part is walking with the football team, and the kids were talking about how cool the racers were that we were giving out, and they did look cool. They did look like cool racers, so that was fun. It was nice to see so many people out there, and I thought that was a really nice thing that our district did. And I, I love that. I think that was a really, really nice thing. Would anybody else like to share an item for the good of Mokina?
I want to share.
You're up, go.
I did all what Jim said about the parade. It was so much fun. And I swear, Mrs. Trolley is like some kind of a rock star with all the kids screaming for her. It was hysterical. I felt like her bodyguard walking next to her. But, oh, and Bingo was super fun.
Yes.
Super fun. Couple upcoming things, the Festa Italiana on the 26th of this month, and National No Doubt, let's go Support Officer Tom on August 5th.
That'll be a nice event, too.
Yeah.
I just want to say, Fourth of July parade was awesome, and I wanted to give a shout out to all these band kids that were walking in the 90-degree heat with their big ginormous instruments. That was my first time being a part of that with a marching band, and it took a lot of horsepower with the parents and the instructors, Mrs. Clifford, and everybody was out there. So, yeah, thanks.
Anybody else?
I do want to just let you know, since our next meeting is going to be the day after this occurs, in the past, we've extended an invitation to our new staff orientation that first day in the morning when we have our staff all together. That is August 12 at 8:30. So if anyone's available to come say hello, welcome our new staff members that morning to join us. We'll be in this room, grab some breakfast treats, say hello, and make sure that our new staff members feel welcomed and that they're off to a good start of the year. So if you're available, I know work schedules, it's difficult, but if you're available, please join us.
Nice idea.
Yep.
Thank you for sharing. Anybody else? Okay, that being said, it is 7:53. I will be making a motion to go into closed session for collective bargaining, security procedures, and litigation. Do I hear a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.